This is your fourth work session on your third focus area as it relates to the budget. Today, what we are going to be covering is revaluation as well as tax revenue rates. And with that, I will turn it over to Jeff Gates, CFO and Administrative Services Director.
Okay, so Cindy mentioned, we're going to talk about revaluation, kind of what happened, and then revenue neutral tax rates, and kind of how the bill, the bill's going to change because I think when you talk about tax rates and start talking through the impact to the taxpayer, and we'll talk a little bit more about this in more detail, but the concept when you're dealing with the rate payers and revenue neutrals, what's the impact to the taxpayer? Because there's a lot of pieces to the calculation and so forth. And at the end, what we'll do is we'll take a look at about, I believe, the six different sets of what we consider the average folks in the county and how changes in the tax rate impacts them each individually versus the collective. Because when we talk about tax rates as a county, we tend to work at a really high level and talk about big numbers, millions and millions of dollars, and we look at those when we provide services, but I think there's a real on the street application or a real impact to the average taxpayer in the county. And that's kind of what we'll wrap up with before we kind of discuss direction or how we move forward. So with that, I want to talk a little bit about the role of property taxes in the county, and I believe this is on page 11 or 12, starting in your book. The presentation's after the workbook. And for everyone actually here, there's some copies of those available. We're going to talk a little bit about the role of property taxes in the county because again, it's kind of important to put it in perspective and understand how property taxes impact county services and how we move forward. The valuation process, we have Robin and Phil from John Toski's office are here with us if we get stuck on any questions and they can answer those for us. The 2016 revow results, kind of what happened. The revenue neutral calculation, because I want to walk through the pieces of it because it impacts our recommendation, but also, keep in mind because we have a bifurcated process, we have a county tax rate and a schools tax rate, and we'll talk about each of those individually. And we have two different recommendations, go ahead and do that. And then, like I said, the tax impact on the taxpayer, I want to show kind of when you play all this out, what does that mean to the average taxpayer in the county? And then at the end, hope to give a little direction from you as to what our recommendations are and then kind of where you're looking as a commission. As you know, Cindy and I are working, in fact, we finished last week balancing the general fund. So if we're going to go drastically different way, this is the point of the year where we even know that to be able to balance that out with, and I won't say minimize due upon the results, but this would be the time that you'd be able to implement any changes other than the recommendation. So with that, I think it's important to note, because we have that bifurcated tax rate, there's a lot of discussion goes on, particularly with the schools, about why we go with property taxes for school services versus sales taxes versus all those other things. Well, as you look here, and this is total county net revenue, so this is all funds. When we say net revenue, what this eliminates is fund balances revenue and inter-fund charges. So we have internal service funds and that's just the mechanism for our county, and sometimes it grosses up the budget, but this is true revenue to the county. You can see 60% of our total revenue comes through property taxes. And in this case, when we say property taxes, what we mean is motor vehicle taxes, real property, business personal property, all of those categories of property taxes. Other revenue, 2%, that is primarily the hospital lease. Investment income, this is across the entire county, includes water utility funds and so forth. Enterprise charges for service, the largest part of that charge comes from your water utility, about 30 million of it, the remainder comes through parks and recreation, human services charges, those kinds of things. Non-enterprise, actually, I'm sorry, enterprise, that includes your solid waste and your stormwater, I believe. And non-enterprise, this is the rest of those things that are not the utilities, this is where your human services and so forth would be. Intergovernmental revenue, and this is important to note because we're going to look at what we call or refer to as our net takers table in a moment, which kind of shows you where the tax revenues and they kind of go. Intergovernmental revenue is provided to the county for a specific purpose, meaning it comes from the federal or state government or from another governmental entity, and it's really can only be used for that purpose. So when you start going through the wheel, this other revenue is a general revenue because that's the hospital lease. Investment income's a general revenue. Enterprise charges for services are used to fund those services that the users pay for. Same thing, non-enterprise charges for service, that includes building permits as well. So those are for user charges. Intergovernmental revenue typically comes with a requirement to use that for what the government's giving it to you for. Other taxes, these are various other smaller taxes, general in nature, and then the sales taxes. So as you can see, looking back, this is kind of where we are in 2015. The 45.5 is the schools dedicated tax rate, the general county operations are 36.4, so that's a all-in tax rate, county-wide is 76.14, and then these are your fire tax districts. And keep in mind, Hemby Bridge and Stallings are different tax districts than Springs, Waxon, Weston Chapel, but these are kind of your localized tax rates. And when we start talking about, I believe on the 20th, we're going to talk a little bit more about fire funding. These become important and what happens in these individual tax districts. And what this would mean then is that for a person living in the Hemby Bridge Fire Tax District, you take the 76 and it's additive to the 526. So that's stacked on top of each other.
But that's not an ad valorem tax?
Yes, that is ad valorem.
Is still considered ad valorem?
Yes, it is. Okay, so they pay that 526, in essence, for the folks in Hemby Bridge or any one of these districts, it is no different in nature than the 45.5 or the 36.4. So they pay that on the same types of stuff that you would pay otherwise, okay? And that's where it differs a little from the fire fee because the fire fee's not on everything, the fire fee's on specific items of residence, vacant land, they all pay at different rates. But as far as Hemby Bridge and these go, these are in effect no different than these tax rates in those districts. I mentioned earlier the net takers table, and this is where it kind of becomes important because when we start talking about availability of funding and where the commission has the ability to raise funding, you're kind of limited. So this is our general fund, this is the original budget for 2015, and it's right at $160 million. But where does that go? So you have 6 tenths of one penny for administrative services, that funds our county functions, our budget office, all of our AP, a lot of backhouse operations. You have, almost half a penny goes to board elections, and the way we did this is these are the actual revenues that these departments are responsible for bringing in. So you can see community partners, and I believe that includes SBCC and the VFTs. No way. It's either VFTs or EMS. .16 in the community partners, and you can see really the biggest chunk of that is the hospital lease. Community services, this is parks, libraries, soil, water conservation, and our MAG extension group, you pay just under three pennies for that service. Emergency services, and I believe that's actually where EMS is, you pay about half a penny, I'm sorry, about five cents for EMS and emergency services, that includes the Fire Marshal's Office, the volunteer fire department contributions and all that other stuff. General County Administration, this is kind of the rest of the backhouse operations, including your assessor's office, legal department, the manager's office, the commission's budget and so forth, and they're listed as a net giver. So anytime you see a negative number up here, it's a net giver, and that's because they get credit for a lot of the ad valorem taxes as the non-departmental entity. They're kind of the catch-all for all the little departments, so we give them credit for some of these pieces. Growth Management, 2 tenths of a net giver, and really what that amounts to is, you can see enterprise charges for service right here, that's all the permit revenue, and we don't fully load the cost of inspections and permitting. So what we would assume is that .2 tenths covers their share of legal services, administrative services, accounting functions, the manager's time, all the stuff if you're an enterprise fund, we charge you back for, but we don't currently charge it as an enterprise fund. Human services, you pay just under seven pennies for, and I will point out, that's not the bulk of their budget. Less than half of their budget comes from the county side. The bulk of their budget really sits in the intergovernmental revenue and their charges for services. You can see that's close to almost 23, a little over $23 million. And those are federal and state revenues to provide, social services, health department, and all of those functions. So you can't, the only part that's really discretionary at the commission level is about that 16 million, and most of that's matching to these other funds that we're required to pay. You got a public works, this has to do with the sign shop and some of the way that the chargeback works, so it's kind of inventory on the total. Registered deeds, seven points or seven one-hundreds, and that comes from the stamp cost, if you will, when you register or any of her other fees that she charges down there. She's a slight net giver, I think this actually in 2016 takes over because of the decline. We've seen declining revenue in a couple of these in 2016. The sheriff's office, as you would kind of expect, because the sheriff's probably the largest priority of the commission, you'd expect to see the sheriff be the highest and it is, right at 10 cents committed to the sheriff's department. So full, almost one-third of your total tax rate is for the sheriff's purpose. And then we have UCPS debt service and facility charges. Keep in mind, we cover all the debt and we pay for maintenance on the central admin building over here, right here in downtown, I can't remember what industry it's on, but so, and that's our building, but we maintain it, we clean it, we do all the maintenance. So the discussion then, what about sales tax and how is that allocated? And our kind of allocation of revenue, we allocate all the sales taxes, particularly this part, local option sales tax, to the debt service for schools. We also take this 2.8 million, that's the lottery proceeds, and that's in addition allocated for debt service. So that five cents, almost five and a quarter that you see there, is above and beyond the sales tax and the lottery proceeds. Remember back, there was a lot of discussion a couple of years ago about when we look at it, why aren't we giving credit for the sales tax and those pieces? Well, that's what this analysis does for us, is it actually parses it out a little bit and shows us. So that's kind of where your 36 cents goes across the county. Really is tied up in basically four major areas, five cents to emergency services, seven cents to your human services, 10 cents to the sheriff's department, and a little over five cents to your schools for just debt service. Because remember, this rate, the 45.5, covers capital and current expense, so this is above and beyond the 100 and, I believe it was about 108 million they received last year in funding for capital and operating. Is that kind of clear to everyone? Because when, we always do this analysis and it gets on it because it's a little complicated to look at, but I think it makes, it kind of tells you where your prioritization is in your taxing and where that money goes. And again, really the only column the commission has the ability to change with ordinance or with, and in setting their annual tax rate, is that current ad valorem column. Non-current ad valorem is what's produced from previous years for collections over past years. So this involves years and years and years' worth of back taxes and so forth. So when you make a tax rate change, this is the only column that will change out of this. Because again, intergovernmental revenues are coming in with a specific purpose, the bulk of which going to human services. You also have non-enterprise charges for services, those are user fees essentially, and then you have some of these other revenues, which most of the 6.1 million is tied up in the, is actually tied up in the hospital lease, and it's fixed out so that it increases by an escalation clause like every five years. So with that in mind, why would you reevaluate? And knowing kind of how it plays out as far as revenue, and a lot of states will do revaluation on an annual basis, so you kind of have this discussion on an ongoing basis. But again, reevaluate really focuses on real property, meaning buildings and land, so not your vehicles, not your business personal property, those are done through a listing process or depreciation process, so it's not done the same way that you would do real property. Therefore, those are valued on an annual basis based on the schedules. Revaluation is done to kind of make those houses, make that property reflective of what the market is, and I'll kind of walk through this in a minute how the steps go. But it really focuses on truing up, if you will, the values against the market for tax purposes. And I'll show you second the comparison of where we've been in the past with reevaluate against being the rate, the sales ratio, which is a measure of how far out of balance it is. And keeping in mind then, the timeframe, at least every eight years, or when your sales ratio is plus or minus 15%, and then it has to be done within three years. And this is the trigger that we hit, that triggered this revalue that we're going through right now. Plus, I think we're coming up, in 2016, we would have had to do it anyway based on the eight-year cycle. So with that in mind, this is kind of, this is a great chart that John uses, and I think, I kind of feel for him, so I'd say, I mean, no claim that I created this, this is one of those that John uses, and it's really good. And this is the sales ratio. And what the sales ratio does is it measures the variance between the sales price and the tax, or the valuation for tax purposes. And as you can see, and this goes all the way back to 1986, we drift down, so this is saying that houses are valued, or the tax value is 67, 68% of what the real market value is. You hit this bottom out right here, and then it's adjusted. So now we think, you know, we're right at 95 and a half percent, so that's real close to market value for the assessed value. And then as you can see, it kind of triples its way down until we get down here to 1999, it's about 70%, and then it's adjusted back to 98%. And you kind of see us, what you see is a recurring theme, that it's an adjustment up, works its way down, it's adjustment up, it works its way down. Well, that becomes kind of bizarre because what happened in 20, in this current cycle is we reached, in about 2012, we reached the peak of 120% out of whack, so meaning that our tax valuations, instead of being undervalued, which is what you see, everything under 100 is undervalued, what we see here is that the tax values are overvalued compared with what the houses are selling for. You hit 111, or 106, 111, and then 120, and if you remember, at plus or minus 15%, meaning 115 or 85, there's a trigger. So when we hit that, sorry, that's the wrong way, when we hit the 120%, we triggered that 15% collar, and we had to do it then within three years. So we went down to 117, we were at 111 in 2014, and then right on the edge of that three-year window, our aim is to be at 100%, we won't be exactly at 100%, but you can see. And this is different because we floated up above 100%. Typically what you would see is this, you know, we saw 55%, 69%, 84%. And that matters when it comes to the revenue neutral tax rate calculation, because what happens is if we design this legislation, we being a state, design a legislation, piece of legislation that's to protect property owners in high-growth periods, okay? Because what the effect or the tax effect of this is that as that valuation goes up, the value of the penny goes up with it. So you shouldn't need to charge as many pennies to collect the same amount of revenue, right? So it's designed, revenue neutral tax rate is designed to help true that up a little bit and give credit for growth. And we'll see that, how that plays out in a minute and why we think it didn't work as well as we hoped. But that's kind of the environment you saw in those years where we did the revows. But this is kind of an unprecedented situation looking at this year. And when I'm talking to the school of government and different folks over there, this, we're not the only ones in this boat, we're seeing it all over. I believe Charlotte and Meg Leberger are having this conversation just a couple of weeks ago, they started that same conversation of declining values, what do you do? Kind of give you an idea of what Union County is made up of. When we talk residential parcels, are about 84% of what we have, around 80,000. Commercial industrial parcels, about 4%, agricultural parcels, about 5%, and exempted other at about 7%. So when we talk about the tax impact, we talk about looking at who pays the taxes in Union County, it is largely on that residential tax base, and this is that discussion we always have about trying to diversify the tax base a little bit, trying to pull down that 84% and get it closer to a 40-60 blend. But this is kind of where we are right now. The valuation process kind of goes in six steps. The first is the quality assurance process, that's where they start to look at data and ensure that they have the right information in-house, that the sales data, or that a lot of the data that they have is correct. They establish appraisal neighborhoods. When we talk about mass appraisal, what they do is they look at you, instead of going into individual house, they establish, I believe it was about 800 neighborhoods this last time, and what they look at is the similarities in the neighborhoods and then putting, grouping together like geographic locations and like neighborhoods. And then they establish a per-square footage price and apply that. So they're not looking at necessarily each individual property, although they do some one-off look at it, but they kind of use this mass appraisal approach. Otherwise, getting back through 95,000 parcels would be near impossible for a staff our size. So they go through this process, they develop the schedule of values, which is the basis then for the charges, that are the basis for their estimation. Qualifying sales data, they look then at what sales have occurred before and after, kind of changes going on in neighborhood, are in those neighborhoods, and then they combine all of that together and make localized adjustments based on what they know. So it's a statistical process, but it also is an expertise process of setting that value. And then at the end, they provide notices of assessment to the landowners, and then that, those landowners have the opportunity, if they want to appeal that process, or they say, in this case, a lot of them will be saying, my property's valued too low or not valued enough, then they have that opportunity. That's kind of where we are right now, those assessments went out two weeks ago. So, and we've seen them on Facebook, people were talking about them, you may have received yours at your house, and so far that I already seen mine. And that's kind of where we are in the process. There's a much more detailed discussion of how this works and what a CAMA system is and computer-aided assessment system. So I won't spend too much time because I think John did this presentation for you guys at a commission meeting, so this shouldn't be brand new to you. So what happened? County-wide, we lost about 4.64% of our total value, and this is on real property only, okay? Not including motor vehicles and personal property values. And this, then this is done by municipality. The one that always throws me is Hemby Bridge as a town, not a fire district, so just kind of keep that in mind. They had the highest loss at 11 and a half percent. Stallings, the town, by the municipality, had about a half percent growth. Everybody else lost somewhere between, you know, here at Indian Trail, four tenths of a percent, nine, Mineral Springs, almost 10%. And kind of what we saw in looking at this is the Crescent, kind of where you had some major redistricting, had some impact on that, plus just where you had a lot of speculative land in 2008, where that land no longer carried that speculative value or that vacant land, that lost a lot of its value. And that's because probably in 2008, it was overvalued, but when we took our last snapshot, remember back to taking the snapshot right here was probably the height of the market? So all that vacant land had a lot of value because it had potential to be built on for development. So when the bottom fell out of the market and the building stopped for the most part, that land lost a lot of that value. And that's where you saw a lot of loss in the county is on vacant land. We saw a lot of people were talking about their assessments changed, not in their house, but in the land it sits on. And that's kind of where we end up then. You can see a lot of these, talking about Mineral Springs, you can see it a little bit in the Weddington area and Weston Chapel, they had larger losses because that's where a lot of that speculative land sat, a lot of high-value speculative land, and now that's kind of come back down. I would argue a lot of this is a true-up based on that speculative nature and the developers kind of go-go-go in the mid, late 2000s and 2007, 08. But that's kind of where we are, and you can see on the, then moving to the east side of the county, where you didn't have as much of that speculation, places like Wingate, just under 2%. Marshville had a pretty good hit, but then you saw some others, you know, you see them kind of all over the map. Monroe, and they just, they're the property, they're one of the biggest, if you look by dollar, or a dollar, but they're just not growing, the value's just not there. So this is kind of what happened across the county. Probably an easier way to look at it is, okay, what happened by parcel type? Because each of these towns have different compositions. Again, going back, this residential represents about 85% of what we have in the county. 69% of the people that have residential parcels saw a decrease in value, and that median change was a loss of just about 5.4%. And actually, 31% saw an increase. And when we start talking about revenue neutral, the concept of revenue neutral works around the mean or the median of the group, so kind of the middle. So you're never going to hit exactly the middle. Some people are going, their tax bills are going to go up this year because they gained a lot of value in their house because maybe they bought at the low end or when they purchased their house, it was way under-valued to begin with. In commercial, you kind of saw a little bit of the same thing, a little over half, saw a decrease in their value, about 2.3% on average, or on the median, and that increase, and about 45% of those saw an increase. So you're going to see this all over, kind of all over the map. An industrial, 65% with a 6% loss, and then agriculture, and it's important to note, this is on taxable value, so this is before any of the exemption programs or any of those deferment programs. So a lot of the agricultural land we have in the county is in one of those programs, so it doesn't necessarily mean that they lost dollar value or going to be paying less or more, it just means that the value, assessed value of that changed. So you saw about 30% loss on 91% of those properties. And again, that kind of supports going back to the vacant land concept.
So just to be clear, you have $10,000 an acre value, it may have dropped to $9,000 an acre value, but it's valued at 301 for tax purposes?
385.
385. So the 385, we didn't take a hit on that, even though 91% went down, we didn't take a hit on it because it's still valued lower than the revalue.
Right. So what you're really dealing with is the impact around this 4% and the impact around this 5.4, because again, agriculture makes up just about 5% of our total landmass, and a large portion of that, a large chunk of that's in the deferment or the exemption program. So kind of, with those in mind, then what does revenue neutral mean? And the challenge with revenue neutral is, revenue neutral doesn't necessarily mean same revenue, because there's a lot of factors to the calculation. And again, when we deal with revenue neutral, we're not dealing with motor vehicles, we're not dealing with business personal property, what we're dealing with is only the value of the real property. So it's a seven-step process, and this is laid out in general statutes, so we follow the general statute, working with Robin's office and with the school of government to kind of be sure we have the calculation right. We establish the 2014 taxable values, and I'll show you how this works out on a chart in just a second, but I'll come walk you through the steps. So this is the, this comes from our certified values. You apply the 2015, FY 2015 tax rates, and you establish what I refer to as the tax rate yield. So this is exclusive of collection rates and those other components. So this is just a raw yield, unadjusted for anything else. Then you establish the 2015 values, meaning one of the newest assessed values, and then you calculate the rate at which you would have to tax those 2015 values to achieve the same amount of revenue that you received in 2015 on a tax rate basis year-over-year. And that, again, that's unadjusted for collection rates, because our collection rate changes every year. So this is just a raw calculation. Then you apply a growth factor to the new rate, and that growth factor's established by taking the average annual growth since the last revow, and then that establishes your revenue neutral tax rate, okay? So let's kind of look at how that plays out. First, this is, our growth rate is about 1.4%. This is the taxable value, you can see 2008 through 2014. If you were to average all of these together, it's 1.4%. And this is specified in the general statutes of how you calculate that. So for the general county operating tax, this is revenue neutral, and we'll all adjust it at the end for the purposes of impact, because I think it's important, but this includes the portion of the general fund that's paid for volunteer fire departments. So this would be inclusive of that at this point. So you have your 2014 tax levy of 20.9 million, and your 36.4 rate, so the yield is 64.1 million. Your new levy, 19.9, almost 20 million, so there's just a little bit less than a billion-dollar loss there. And what, so we apply 32.12 against that levy to yield 64.1. So you can see it's a slight increase, and then you apply your growth factor of 1.4% and that brings you to your revenue neutral rate of 32.57. That's ju- That's just over one point nine percent increase to get to a revenue neutral. The interesting part, and this is kind of part of our recommendation, is how you apply the growth factor. The interesting part about this is that the growth factor is put in to try to protect residents and governments against high growth periods, or give them credit if you will. In my opinion, and I think Cindy probably shares the same opinion after looking at it, my staff after spending some time with it on Friday, again, looking at it. That is not all what's happening when you apply this rate the way they've applied it. Because what this does then is it says, all the taxpayers that were here before are paying that thirty-two twelve, but we're going to add growth to it on the rate side. So all the same taxpayers are now going to, in this case, pay that thirty-two five seven. It's not, it's not helping the taxpayer in that process. It's actually adding to their tax rate, their tax burden through that process. And I'll jump ahead real quick to our own recommendation. One of the recommendations we have is that we don't apply that growth rate. So we try to go same, we try to get it as close to the same revenue as possible year over year. Recognize that's near impossible because nobody's average. But this growth factor.
Well, and let's talk a little bit about what that means financially. Because we did our, what I call our slice and dice for about nine hours on Thursday, where we go through all of the requests on the budget and determine what we recommend in, what we recommend out. When we looked at the growth factor, that generated an additional, was it two point one million dollars? In excess of what we had collected in the prior years. So what we did as part of our budget reduction is we said, let's put that on the reduction column. Let's say that we're going to reduce that amount as well as what we have to reduce countywide to get us to a balanced budget. And by doing that, through the calculation process, we actually ended up only generating thirty-five thousand dollars more under the revenue neutral rate. So the recommendation, Jeff will get to that. But the recommendation we will be making this afternoon to you on the revenue neutral rate is do not include the growth rate in that, which will be a different number than the point three two five seven.
Right, and so if you have all the pieces, a quick primer on how you calculate taxes in Union County and how you calculate tax impact. If you know this number total, real personal property altogether, and you can apply collection rate to that. You know motor vehicle taxes, what that'll be, you apply a collection rate to that, and you can calculate your tax impact. So as Cindy mentioned, we had this would be kind of at that thirty-two twelve number. So you have some limited growth, and this is applying that calculation as to here. So you see a thirty-five thousand dollar change going fifteen to sixteen. And you we see the growth really in, you really see the growth of motor vehicle. And that's not because we're valuing motor vehicles higher, it's because we're seeing a growth in motor vehicles. And keeping in mind, motor vehicles are on a declining depreciation scale, right? That each year they go down. So when we see growth, that's because people have replaced their vehicles or having new people come into the county. There's a lot of things happening there, not like your house, where if you stay in your house each year, it's going to go up or down based on the value change in market. Your car generally is going to be depreciating. So when we talk about motor vehicles, again, that's not part of the calculation for revenue neutral. So what we're recommending to you, and what will be the recommendation, is to exclude that growth factor from the conversation and come in at that thirty-two one twelve. Keep in mind, this is revenue neutral. And you really, on the real property side, end up generating about thirty-five thousand dollars more than we did the year before. If you were to go to a rate neutral, in other words, bring this back, bring the sixteen amount down to thirty cents again, what you'd see is a net reduction of a couple of million dollars to the county. And that's real dollar, or year over year loss in revenue. So this, I would consider this calculation, as we've got it presented here, to be really more revenue neutral than applying that growth factor. Particularly in a year where we're seeing declining values for four and a half percent. So it really kind of breaks even with the taxpayer, it breaks even with the county. Tightens our belt a little bit because we do have inflation that we have to deal with. But we think it's the right thing to do and kind of working through this calculation, looking at kind of the point of it. Are there any questions on that side of the equation? Because I want to talk about the schools in just a second.
Well, and that's kind of where I'm leading to right now. The thirty, the thirty-two twelve is just our side.
That's the county operating side.
And there's a separate entity that that now is your twenty billion, that is your total taxable property that applies to either the county or the schools.
Yeah, correct. You use this calculation regardless of what tax base you're using, as long as you're working on the countywide side of the house. This can be used for anything. This is what it is regardless of what rate it is specifically. So when you look at this and you were to work this out, it's a penny value, every penny of tax rate is about two million, three hundred and four thousand and change, I want to say like three hundred and sixty-five dollars or something like that. And that's a drop because if you remember last year when we talked about it, the penny value was about two, two-three-eight-one. So we lost about seventy-five, seventy-six thousand dollars on every penny in the county through the rebound process. But when you work all this out, and if you want to know how to do it, sometime I can sit down with a calculator and show you the fast way to do it, which Robin showed me. So but the impact then for every penny of tax rate that you raise or that you increase or decrease on a countywide basis is about two point three million dollars. So but yeah, that's, so you get kind of there.
That slide there. The one, go back to that. With delta between the two, you look at what it costs to operate this year in your proposed budget, what's the delta there?
When we're starting to look at countywide operations, and one of the reasons we felt comfortable in coming back to this is we've seen really healthy sales tax returns. In fact, higher than we even projected. I think our last two months have been in that seventeen, eighteen percent range. So it's reducing the strain on the property tax a little bit. So that the net change between the two years is about four percent. Keep it in mind, that includes some outside entity money and that kind of stuff. So that's not just our operating cost, that's.
You're increasing the cost by four percent?
Right, but not the general, yes, and that includes external, some external entities as well, but yeah. And primarily, and I don't want to jump ahead because we do have coming on the first of May, your total budget presentation. But the way we approach it is, we set out some priorities. Being sheriff, the second year of the sheriff's program, funding for that. We set up some priority for employee compensation, protecting the current employees we have as far as no layoffs, maintain employee benefits. And then we kind of go through what are our mandated services from the state that have increased the cost? What are public safety needs as far as the sheriff's department and where does that can apply and so forth? So when you talk about growth, a large chunk of that growth came through the pay increase. What will be the proposed pay increases, the sheriff's funding, funding for EMS, a couple of new positions with the sheriff's department, child protective services and adult protective services, and NCFAST increased our burden. Because we saw pretty heavy increases in the cost of the NCFAST program, the second year of the sheriff's program, and EMS contract went up pretty considerably. So and then the, some of the other outside agencies kind of saw a little bit of an increase here and there. So that's not just, just county operations proper. But that includes that whole list going back where we were talking about the dispersion of the tax rate. That's where all this growth, and that penny value, kind of the same way, it kind of shook out, was real close to the same. I haven't rerun the entire calculation since we had a pad down day. But it still remained roughly the same mix. Priority being the sheriff's department, you have the human services, so forth.
And before we leave this slide, I think it's, there's two components that are important to mention. One is the sales tax. And we thought that may be an anomaly in Union County. We actually contacted the state, and even the state said for the last few months, they have seen a huge growth in their sales tax. So one of the things we did about revenue projections is we increased them yet again, saying that we believe that we are safe in our estimations based upon the historical trend we're seeing in Union County as well as what we are seeing in statewide and talking to them as to what they have seen with sales tax. The other thing is really the motor vehicles. If you recall, prior to the state taking that over, that you have to pay for your title and taxes all at the same point in time. It was bifurcated, and prior to that, we only had about an eighty-five percent collection rate with motor vehicles. Because they're not necessarily in one place, and people sometimes will pay one and not necessarily the other. And what we have seen now is we're averaging around a ninety-seven percent rate. And that also was a significant adjustment to our, to our revenues, so.
And that's, and we continue to push the upper edge of the ninety-eight point six. So what I would suggest to you is, this growth really isn't due to growth in the tax base or change in the tax bases. That's really due to the tenth of a percent increases in collection rates, which we're seeing. I think last year we were at ninety-eight and a half, this year we're at ninety-eight point six. You know, thirty-five thousand dollars on sixty-eight million dollars is fractions. And again, like Cindy said, you're seeing a couple of things happen. We're seeing that collection rate drive up at ninety-seven percent. Plus, we're seeing a little bit of an increase in the total taxable values of motor vehicles. So total increase due to the revenue neutral rate or those growths, not revenue neutral, but without the growth rate, is about a million dollars year over year. And again, if we were to cut back, as you can see, that one point nine cents, the total value of one point nine cents is right at four, four point two, four point three million dollars is where, I'm sorry, it wouldn't, not one point nine. But it's a little over a penny. That's about three million dollars year over year, so.
And that's not taking in, anticipating the state's redistribution to sales tax, that's not considered.
Because there's a lot of talk, if they do that, then it's just like they did with the lottery money and they may take it for themselves.
Yeah, but there's always a little concern, however well intentioned that change would be, that control is control, and if they change that process, then like Cindy said, as easily as they give it, they can take it away at that point. And they've done that with Medicaid, they've done that with lottery proceeds and all these different things. So there's a little bit of risk. I think one way of analysis you could look at it, and you could assume that everything's going to be hunky-dory and they're never going to do that and would generate more money for the county. The other way is if they exercise their full abilities under the law, they could have a serious impact to the county. And it could just be a setup to try to get more money back to the state level. Or they could direct where it goes, that kind of comes into the other discussion. And keep it in mind, at this point, if you were to go all the way back, even with our growing value of sales tax, I think we're right at thirty-four million this year, looking at for, I'm sorry, sixteen. That still all is going to go to the covering debt service for the schools. What it does though is freeze up that support, that twelve point four million to go back to the operations. And again, the vast majority of the funding you give, even the new funding, will go into going to the sheriff's office. In fact, I think you have the bulk of the new positions other than human services. So. So that's the county side of the equation. Let's talk about schools. Running the same calculation, where they end up is four-eight-three-seven on a revenue basis, on a revenue neutral basis. Without the growth, they'd be at forty-seven-seven. The difference between the county and the schools is though, we have a legis, we have a local legislation in place that kind of tells us what we have to fund. So what we're going to look at is what we're going to look at then is, if we were to fund them at the legislative level, what does that tax rate have to be? Because keep in mind, we looked at ours based on an operating impact and other revenue sources. For schools, what we'll do is walk through the calculation. So the current expense funding is to grow based on the legislations to grow through the CPI as student population. If you were to believe the DPI estimates, then they're going to grow about one, let's say one-three, one-four percent. CPI is growing about one-six. So their total, their total growth is just under three percent or in that two-nine range. That yield is an eighty-nine point six million. That's up from just over eighty-seven million in twenty fifteen.
How many, how many children does that translate to?
Somewhere between forty-two and forty-three thousand. Or five hundred and sixty-two.
Five hundred and sixty.
And we're still going back and forth as to which number. We haven't necessarily agreed on what the appropriate number is. My position is we count students that are actually in hand in the last real count. Schools would like to count estimates, looking forward looking estimates. And that's because that's how the state does it, and there's a true-up process. Unless we agree to a true-up process, there's no mechanism in general statute for a true-up on our side. So this is using the school's preferred projection method versus what we've recommended before. Capital is actually outlined specifically, it says nineteen point seven million, almost nineteen point eight. That's up from about nineteen point five and change in two thousand and fifteen. So the total funding need is a hundred and nine, a hundred and nine point five million. Use of the rate smoothing reserve, if you remember last year when you set the tax rate, that board built in a little bit of a cushion so that this year we wouldn't have such a high increase in the tax rate. So that helped, it did what we expected it to do, it reduced the impact or the need for a rate this year. So you apply the one point eight million or the one point seven four six. So you get down to what your total funding need is of just under one point eight million. And to yield one point eight million dollars on a countywide basis, given your collection rates, it's a forty-six point seven four tax rate. That is just over a penny and a quarter, or just under a penny and a quarter increase year over year for schools. And again, these are specified in the legislation. It's our recommendation, even though I think we've already seen the schools propose, the managers propose, no, the superintendent's proposed budget is asking for something in the neighborhood of ninety-five million instead of the eighty-nine six. We would recommend that this is where you budget until that legislation, such time as it expires or it goes away. Because this is driven by the legislation. Of course, you as a commission can decide to give them whatever you want to give them. But this is what you're legally bound to at this point. So given that, and given that we're going to look at kind of how did all of the changes related to the countywide fire tax portion? If you remember, I told you that when we started, we hadn't netted out the part of the county funding that funds on a general basis VFDs. When you net out the part that already goes to VFDs, your countywide tax rate becomes, for general operations, becomes thirty-one point four or five. And what that amounts to is about point six seven cents of your general tax dollars, general fund dollars, go to the VFDs already through contributions and additional support that they get. So.
So you're getting point six seven?
Point six seven cents. It's a little over a million and a half dollars, like a million and a half, three-six. So based on our analysis then and working with the VFDs, and we'll get into a lot more detail about this in our next work session. But for the purposes of this discussion, I just wanted to go ahead and needed to put it in because I think you need to see the total tax bill and how it impacts. Our recommendation is going to be four point four cents for the entire county. Keep it in mind that buried in that four point four cents is already point six seven that they pay. So your net, it's really netted out of here and added down here first. So your net gain on fire tax countywide is three-seven-three, not the four forty. We just straightened out the tax rates for the purposes of this discussion. And this is how, assuming all else being equal, and you went with a recommendation, for instance, this is what your tax bill will look like. And if you lived in one of the five tax, four of the five tax districts, you would have Hemmy Bridge or Stallings or something else down below with its localized tax rate. So I think really.
Explain that localized tax rate.
If you remember in the hybrid model that we discussed, there is a portion of those tax districts funding that will be provided through this four point four cents. Then there is a portion then of premium coverage or higher than normal coverage in the county that will be funded through what we refer to as a localized tax rate. So a good example is Waxaw this last year. And this is based on our conversations and the budget process and as we kind of worked through it. Waxaw has for, it's a two, two nighttime and an additional weekend person. And some increases for their shift pay and those things. So to staff at that level, the cost of that was about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So what we said is that the county will cover, will cover a portion of what's historically been covered in Waxaw. But if you want that additional staffing in Waxaw, then that's premium. Because their density, because their way they're structured, they need higher than average staffing levels. So that portion of the increase that would have been all put onto Waxaw or that total budget, which would have been all Waxaw's localized rate, is now being parsed. or that total budget which would have been all Waxaw's localized rate, is now being parts, parsed between the four point four cents and a local tax rate to Waxaw. So instead of everyone else in the county's paying four point four cents for service, for fire service, Waxaw's paying, I'm gonna say it's like five, five-thirty, something like that. So they're paying that additional penny for that additional service that they're receiving. And it's the same way in, um, Hemmy Bridge, Waxaw, Mineral Springs, and those other areas, all to varying degrees because they're all different in how you can, um, how you apply it. So let's kinda look real quick because I think that it'll help you understand kinda what I'm talking about if we can look at tax rate impacts.
Can you, can you go back, let me ask a question?
Absolutely.
On this, if you add the point three-one-four-five and the four-six-seven-five, that's what, seven-eight-twenty?
Yes.
Okay, what is our current adware home tax?
It is seventy-six, um.
I don't remember the pennies.
Yeah, it's seventy-six and change, so.
Does, does the.
Thirty-six-four plus, it's like seven-six-one-four.
Trying to understand, does the seventy-six currently include fire taxes and fire fees?
It does not, except for the point six-seven piece.
Okay, so, okay.
Okay, and the challenge you have is we're converting from that fire fee structure to a tax model. So you were already having to supplement the fire fee structure with general dollars, general tax dollars. There were only two last year that weren't at the full hundred dollar cap. And this year, including Jackson this year, oddly enough, will all go, they all go to a hundred based on their request and based on, on the recommendation. So, um, that's why converting, you, you can't book just a total tax rate because you have this hundred dollar piece sitting out there that depending upon the value of your house, if you're in a house under two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, then converting to a tax rate for, um, going from the hundred dollars to a tax, general fire tax will actually benefit you. And everybody below that will benefit because it takes more, it takes, um, more in tax rate to generate the hundred dollar bill than it does, than you're paying now. So, um, that's why I think doing this comparative analysis helps because it really, it's hard to do the comparison because it's not apples and oranges until you convert it to dollars and tax bill. So for instance, Bakers. If you look, um, Bakers went from, and this is again, these are proxies or estimates, so this is probably not anybody's specific situation, but generally it's probably about right. If you had a two hundred and four thousand dollar house at twenty-fourteen, um, valuation and you had a motor vehicle at ninety-six hundred, when you come into twenty-fifteen, that house is gonna now be worth just under two hundred thousand and your car's gonna have gone down to ninety-one, um, hundred. So your loss in value in total is about fifty-three hundred dollars. So your county tax at the, uh, proposed rate, it changes by a dollar. Your schools tax will actually go down by twenty-five dollars. And because you were already at this eighty, eighty-nine fifty-seven, you're gonna see a little bit of a two, like a two dollar increase in your fire tax or fire fee attacks. So your total can bill impact, when you, at the end of the day, you sit down and write your check, is going to be a twenty-two dollar reduction. Does that kinda make sense for everybody how we did that? So what we said is, at the new tax rates, this is at the recommended tax rates, and this would be at the recommended four-four for, um, VFD funding, you would see that twenty-two dollar change. And that's where I spot on because nobody's gonna be exactly this. So this is right around median. Um, in fact, most escrow companies, I think about forty percent in our county still pay through escrow. About forty percent of those folks won't see a change in their escrow either way from this calculation. Um, they may see some of that change when they go to pay their motor vehicle tax, but you can see their motor vehicles isn't value anyway. Um, and that's a fire fee district. So looking at the Stallings VFD, and of course, this is, this would assume that their increase in cost for twenty-fifteen didn't drive this rate up to a hundred dollars, which it does, based on new building and new costs and everything out there at Bakers. So this is actually, you could make the argument, this is, this is an eight dollar reduction over what it would have cost under a hundred dollar fire fee to begin with. But Stallings VFD, if you had a house is on one oh, one ninety-five, nine thirty-four, you're about the same loss by a hundred dollars with the value. Again, this is the Stallings VFD, not Stallings, the town. Motor vehicle, you went from thirteen-five to twelve-eight, you lost about fifteen hundred dollars in value. So here's kinda how your tax bill paid out. You would have paid twelve dollars more in county taxes, you would have paid twelve dollars more in county taxes, seven less in schools, six dollars less under the fire tax model, um, so your impact is a dollar. So your, your net-net again, about even. And really when we were working through this calculation, that was our goal. We were working toward net-net about even, okay? Mineral Springs, and keep in mind, Mineral Springs saw the biggest decrease, remember when we kinda looked at it? We, uh, a big, a big decrease, not the biggest, but a big decrease.
Hemmy Bridge was the biggest, huh?
Hemmy Bridge was the biggest. Hemmy Bridge, town proper. The VFD, actually Mineral Springs VFD, which is in, Mineral Springs proper, but a bigger area, saw a pretty significant loss as well. So if you're in a two hundred and forty-four thousand dollar home in twenty-fourteen, you see the change, you went from twenty, two forty-four to two twenty. Your vehicle's going down, um, from twenty to nineteen, so you lost about twenty-five thousand. So under that scenario, when you go from a county tax, you can see a reduction of fifty-eight dollars in your tax bill. Schools tax, you see a reduction of about a hundred and eighteen. And net-net on the fire, and this is in a tax district, you see a twenty-three dollar reduction. And the reason why in Mineral Springs this happens is because while Mineral Springs was paying, I wanna say four-eight-six, four-eight-three, four-eight-three. Keep in mind, they were already paying point six-seven through the general fund. So they weren't paying four-eight-three, their effective tax rate was closer to five and a half cents. So you're giving them, you're giving the taxpayer in Mineral Springs the benefit of what they were paying in the general fund on top of their tax rate. So in Mineral Springs, actually you see no increase in the fire tax, they get given back that point six-seven which they've been losing to the general fund to begin with. And that's why you see a twenty-three dollar reduction. So under this setup and this specific facts, you actually see a bill, a real bill reduction of close to two hundred dollars. Yes, sir.
Mineral Springs is one of two departments that is currently paying over four point four. And only two departments paying more than four point four.
I thought Stallings was over.
Stallings, you're showing at four point two-eight.
Okay.
And you got Wesley Chapel, it's three-eight-six and it's two-eight-one.
On.
On, on the fire tax. So my question is, is because you said these, these locations will have to pay a premium because of the higher rooftops, what is that gonna be on top of that? Because you can't give, you can't let them, let them have the complete four point four.
This would be under the new.
And then subsidize the others.
This would be under the new impact. So this includes the, this includes that additional layer. So if you were looking at, and Wesley Chapel, for instance, doesn't have premium under the four-four. They don't have a premium above the four-four at this point because they're, they're a net giver in that calculation.
Okay.
Okay, and Waxaw is right at break-even because of the increase in, um, on a net basis, because of the increase in, um, their staffing. So what, the way this calculation works is this gives them on a net-net basis how they, um, were paying for fire anyway. Cause remember we trued up the tax rates here, so this calculation trues up the tax rate.
So, so Mineral Springs will pay four point four maximum.
They're gonna pay four, they're gonna pay four-eight-three under this structure.
Four-eight-three?
Yep, so their premium is point four-three under this structure.
Okay.
And Wesley Chapel's got no premium under this structure, um, and I can't remember what Waxaw's is. Stallings is paying a little bit of a premium, um, and Hemmy Bridge is right at a break-even from what they look. So they're paying a dollar, or not a dollar, a penny, um, I wanna say a penny fifty premium, but that's where they already were above, um, above the four-fourty mark. So their, their real tax rate didn't change, except for maybe a couple of tenths or a tenth of a penny. They kinda broke even in that calculation. Because on a net basis, someone, for instance, in Hemmy Bridge is already paying five, uh, was it five twenty-six? They were, they were really paying, because of the point six-seven, five, um, was that five eighty, five ninety, uh, ninety-three? And I think our rate's five ninety-one if I remember right. I haven't looked, I looked at it today, I can't, I think it's five ninety-one. Uh, so that premium, that premium bump breaks them about even. And I think I have, yeah, I'll cover Hemmy Bridge and kinda how it played out for them here in just a second. But, um, so yeah, this, what this twenty-fifteen amount does is it trues up the tax rate on a net-net basis. So this would impact, this would include what they were already paying in the general fund, just separated out to the fire tax portion. So there's not, there wouldn't be additional on top of, for instance, in, in, uh, Mineral Springs. That's what it would be at their current rate, not with a premium rate.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
That's what they would be paying.
Okay.
At the proposed rate, that would be inclusive of all, let me go back, inclusive of all the rates there. So if they have a premium, it would be included in this rate right here. So Mineral Springs has a point four-three premium. And that's included in that calculation. What you see is because they were already at four-eight-three and were paying point six-seven more to the general fund, they get the benefit of that point six-seven coming back to them. Because they really weren't paying four point eight-three, they were paying, um, that differential, so it was a little, like five-four.
So was a point six-seven taken out of the, the other rates, the three point six-four?
It was, um.
Cause you're counting it back in in the fire calculation.
Right, if you're talking about Wesley Chapel, to get to four-four, Wesley Chapel's getting, they'll be a net giver, so their rate's gonna creep up. But they get the benefit of the point six-seven, and then three-eight-three is what they were paying before you changed it all. Because it's their local rate plus their general fund rate. So that's their effective tax rate. Does that make sense? So this is, this is a comparison, apples, an apples-to-apples comparison in the tax districts of what they paid before on a real basis, meaning local tax rate plus general fund rate. I guess what they would pay now under the general tax model plus any premium that is there. And the premium is varied because there's different levels of premium service. Uh, in Wesley Chapel's case, their original rate, when you added general fund to their localized tax rate, was that three-eight-three number. So they're, so they're going to see a slight increase to get them to four-four. Everybody else saw a decrease or broke even because they were above that four-four or right around that, um, four-four amount because they get the benefit now of the general fund portion they were paying. Does that kinda make, does it, you follow me?
No.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I guess it goes back to my first question. When Chris Platae goes out and advertises in economic development, our seventy-six adware home tax rate. If you roll this into, it's gonna take it to eighty-four.
Eighty-two, eighty-two something.
So what you're doing is you're moving the fire tax, the fire tax into the adware home tax. So actually driving up our, what's gonna be sold to the other communities as the, uh, as our adware home going up considerably.
But they were, they would've had to pay a fire fee in, in the places that have fire fees.
But it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, is what I'm saying.
No, in a lot of cases, that fire fee would be more than what the tax rate impact is.
Now, the other thing that I don't understand is when you got fifteen departments that are going from a fire fee to, uh, to a tax rate. And our conversations in the past has been that by going to a tax, there'll be considerable less revenue gathered in those communities. So how, when you've only got two communities above your four point four, are they gonna subsidize the rest of the county?
You have a couple of things going on there. First of all, under the fire fee bump, the fire fee doesn't touch everything, okay? So there are things out there, vacant land parcels that get a very limited fire fee. What's, it's like twenty, on the vacant acreage.
It's ten dollars.
Ten dollars. So when you go, when you shift over to an adware home structure, you capture all these things that didn't historically have fire fee on them. So that's your first bump, okay? Then you also, you're getting the full value of those areas, their net givers, just like any other county services. Some of that money's coming out of Wesley Chapel, some of that money, a little very slight piece is coming out of Waxaw. You also capture Monroe, and you have some of the Weddington value in that discussion as well, although we do give money to Providence and Wesley Chapel and Stallings, which are the three fire, state fire districts that service Weddington proper. What it amounts to is though, the value across the entire county, when you factor in all the business personal property and all that different property, is greater than what you're able to put fire fee in the individual fire districts on. So you're, and so, and you are, you're doing two things, you're capturing higher values, and you are doing some redistribution across the county provided based on the fire service. No different than the way we do EMS, no different than the way we do the sheriff's department or any, any of the county services. You know, no, no part of the county is serviced on, based on its ability to pay, it's all serviced based on its ability, uh, based on speed. So that's how you're able to do, to get there, uh, through the fire tax by lowering that rate. And again, part of the issue is that if I live in a ten thousand dollar trailer, or if I live in a thirty thousand dollar trailer and trailer and property total thirty, and I'm paying a hundred dollar fee on that trailer, my effective tax rate is thirty cents for, for that. So what you're doing is you're equalizing it across all of those things, just like we do on our services. So the folks in the higher dollar houses are paying more for fire service than they would historically. But it's equaling out because you were taking more from the lower side than what you would normally tax them at. So what you're doing is really truing up the fire funding in the county and across the county so that everybody has the chance to have the equipment and the staffing they need across the county to be able to do that. And then in those areas that require a higher density or a higher level of staffing or unique equipment, you're cha, you're charging them a slight premium above that four-fourty, but they're still getting their share of that four-fourty.
You're charging a premium because there's more population there?
More population and their service demands are a little different than what, what we would consider the base. So for instance, we wouldn't necessarily recommend in Wax, in Wax, in Waxaw that they add that staffing. We may believe that there's enough there based on the standards established by the state to be able to fund that response time accurately or sufficiently. Now, they've asked, so we're trying to leave a little bit of autonomy to some of the, those five tax districts. And so we didn't get into necessarily recommending against their staffing levels or their equipment needs. We left it some autonomy and said, if you're gonna go that route, then your residents in that localized area will have to pay a premium to that because we do not wanna take it from somewhere else in the county and not be able to fund adequately the fire service in another part of the county to have a premium level of service in, in, um, for instance, in Waxaw or in Hemmy.
I think premium's a, a inappropriate term. I think in our conversation, tiers, when you've got higher volumes, it requires, you know, you got fire districts running two hundred calls a year, you got fire districts that run two thousand. Cause they run two thousand, that's not a premium. That's a requirement to cover larger basic citizens. And so I think we need to be careful in how we, how we label that. Just because there's more citizens there, do you charge them more? I mean, it takes more personnel to respond to two thousand calls than it does two hundred.
What Jeff has described in, in, you know, putting the terminology aside, is exactly what we talked about two weeks ago with respect to what the hybrid model would look like. We talked about establishing a base level of service across the board for all VFDs. And then those that already have taxing authority, providing them with that little bit of autonomy to provide a higher level of service to their communities because in many cases, they already are based upon when we look at a county-wide model.
You know, one, one thing, and I, the reason I believe that they need that higher level of service in those areas is a lot of times you have, you know, you're not, if you come to put my house out, you're coming to put my house out, you're gonna, it's gonna burn. You're gonna get maybe half of it out or whatever, but you're saving my neighbor's home. And where you have that higher density, you could have three or four houses burned. So they do need that protection that they can have higher levels of service if they need them. So, so it's not, it's not a, you know, I don't take it, when I hear him saying, I don't take it as a, as a slight to the other parts of county, you're getting something. you're getting something where not, I really don't take it that way. I, I see the need because, you know, ladder trucks, we just don't have many tall houses where, where we're at. So my fire department wouldn't need a ladder truck, whereas, you know, there's some multiple-story homes on the, in, in areas that have those, which could. And, and so, yeah, I, I kinda see what you're saying with the premium, but I think it just means that they need that higher level of service. That's what we approved.
Right.
We're talking about the, the hybrid model.
Going back the other way, kind of what you're talking about, if we moved away to the countywide version, we could do that. The, uh, the rate would creep up from four-point-four slightly. But you would incorporate that countywide, cause there's no good way to, you can't really slice off those tax districts under a fee, under a tax model in any way that you can fund all of the fire districts. So I understand...
Without reducing their level of service.
Without reducing their level of service. So I understand what you're saying, that maybe premium's not the right word, premium was just the...
Higher level.
Above base levels. So, but in some cases, they do staff at a different level than what they would staff at their, at their departments. They also have different equipment, which is driven by the local area and their decisions, not necessarily by the requirements. So on some level, there are, there are, we left in some autonomy under that hybrid model that, under another version, if you had a countywide tax rate, for instance, that generally without the localized part, there are some things that they've requested or some things that they've asked for that, that we wouldn't recommend putting in your countywide tax rate. So the, the hybrid model's really trying to strike that balance of autonomy while being sure that we funded the, the core need across the county for fire service. And I think this struck a good balance, and on a net-net basis, and as we can see, even in Wesley Chapel, which is a net giver in that equation, if you were to take the, um, fire tax contribution, it's gonna go up sixty dollars. But with all the other adjustments on their total bill, their total tax impact is actually a reduction of forty-five dollars. And that's why you kind of have to take the whole thing together because, um, you won't, you have a unique situation. Only two counties in the state have this fire fee issue.
And the other county's moving away from it.
Other county's moving away from it. So you can't divorce the hundred-dollar fire fee discussion from the rest of the tax rate. Cause I think you have to look at the entire bill to see what the impact is.
I've guessed on what the fire fee would be on Wesley Chapel if they didn't have the tax.
Any, am I positive guess wrong?
Is that something maybe you could look at and tell, I mean, so let's say that we took the people that were on the fire tax now and moved them to the fire fee, could they make it or not? Or would they...
No, I would say, I would say not.
So, so like Wesley Chapel, you don't think a hundred dollars a house at Wesley Chapel would make it on the fire fee?
I'd probably say not, because their, their penny value is so high. Their penny value is like four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Cause I think that maybe we're, we're getting stuck, you know, that's where I get stuck on thinking how, you know, like, like we're talking about before, how do you get, and I always assume adding in Monroe and adding in some other place, you know, and Wesley Chapel was driving it up. So, so you're saying that, and I'd like to see the numbers, I know, I don't mean to stick, put you on the spot.
Sure.
But I'd like to see the numbers. If Wesley Chapel would go to the hundred-dollar fire fee, what would the difference in their income would be versus the tax they have now and the fee?
And, and we certainly didn't mean to confuse the, the revenue neutral issue, but we, we thought this was important. I mean, we are going to go into a lot more detail, um, when we do our briefings, as well as when we do our workshop on the twentieth as it relates to fire fee funding. The, the presentation today is really to give you an overview as to if you were to go with both recommendations. And we're only asking for one today, and that is with the, respect to the tax, uh, revenue neutral rate. And then on the twentieth, we will be presenting the fire fee funding and, and asking, uh, for, we'll be making a recommendation and asking for a decision on that.
And we, and we've heard eighteen fire districts, maybe, I've heard that before, and it's different things. Again, bring me eighteen fire fee.
Well, we have, I've done, I've done the eighteen different tax districts. I've done the rate, the calculation on the, um, effective tax rate, and we've done what the county subsidy has to be under the current model. And we can, I think Robin, I don't want to promise, cause Robin's the one that has to figure this out. Can we do parcel account for Wesley Chapel to figure out what the improvements are to be able to figure out the dollar tax rate, our, our fee? We can do it on Wesley Chapel, it might be a little onerous to try to do it on all five, but we can try to figure that out and offer some of that.
Well, Wesley Chapel's the best case scenario.
Sure.
They're the lowest tax rate.
Lowest tax rate, they're the highest, um, value of all of them.
So again, could they make it, could they make it on the fire fee?
We'll, we'll take a look at it. My gut reaction's probably not, that's why they went with the tax rate of it originally, so.
Two, two things. So what I heard, you, you, you're asking for us to look at the revow information. The fire tax is not up for discussion tonight, we'll come back later.
Right. We are not, we, we did it as an example to give you a concept as to if you were to look at the whole ball of wax, what it looks like. But the direction that we'd be looking for today is on the revenue neutral rate only. Correct.
Revenue neutral, that's growth.
Yes. Then we will, when we, uh, we come back on the twentieth, we will be making a full presentation on the fire funding.
That's good.
Yeah. I got one other question on that. And I apologize for heartbrokenness.
That's okay.
But right now, like I said, the seventy-six is the adwarement rate, seventy-eight's what it would go to if we just talked the revow. Right now, you can't use fire fee and fire tax money other than in those districts, correct?
Right.
With the new model and rolled it under the adwarement, is there anything to limit you from deciding, I wanna build a new library with that money instead of paying for fire departments?
Technically, there's nothing to limit you from making that decision, so...
So the government entity could take the fire dollars and put it elsewhere with this proposed method?
That would be right, except for, except for the pre, the above the four-fourty.
What their people are being taxed extra.
Right.
And then also, if you tax Monroe at four, do you give them all four, four, or what do you give?
Jumping ahead to our next recommendation, we've recommended giving them a penny of their tax rate back. So otherwise, that's the only way to make fire funding across the county work.
And wedding to the fee? They stay the way they are?
The, the reason why fire fees don't work is because they are based on a fee for use. There's not enough revenue in the fee for use model, based on what they place the fire fee on, to be able to fund the VFDs. And even in the case of the, the tax rate VFDs, you're seeing, you would see them, and their real, their effective tax rate is over six cents in some cases. So the way to provide the services, that is not dissimilar to the way we provide sheriff services. The folks in Monroe pay for the sheriff, they pay... The folks in Monroe pay for a police department and pay nine-point-nine cents for sheriff services. This is no different. But what we did, what we would want, would recommend to you is that we try to help supplement the funding for fire departments in Monroe, and that's through what we calculated would be a penny on their tax rate to give back. It's not a perfect calculation, nobody's a perfect calculation, but it is something back to the residents. In the same way, we would fund Wesley Chapel, Providence, and Stallings to give back to the residents of Weddington because you are capturing some of that value back for fire service you're not providing. Does that kind of make sense? And so they all, particularly when it comes to the sheriff's services, because Monroe has a duplicate, and this is the case with Stallings as well.
And Waxahachie.
And Waxahachie. They, all of those entities are paying, all those residents in those towns are paying ten cents, or nine-point-nine cents for the sheriff's services, and they're paying a local tax rate to provide police services.
A lot of the ask, in addition to Mr. Russians, look at the, uh, fire fees for the tax, current tax districts. I'd like to see a breakdown of what your anticipated revenue that the fifteen fire fee districts would generate and tax when you come back on the twentieth.
We can do that. In fact, we...
Probably already got it.
We have it. And, um, the tax rates in some cases jump over at ten cents, so...
No, I said, what I'm asking, what, what are they?
The four-four.
So when you give them the four-four, what is that gonna, what are they gonna give?
We have that, cause we broke it out. So, yeah, that's how we did this calculation, so...
Okay.
Um, for instance, New Salem, and this is primarily where you'll see the real impact of that change from a fire fee to a fire tax. And because you have a house that's well below that threshold, you go from two-oh-three to one-seventy-two, um, vehicle change. So you see across the board at the tax rates proposed, you see reductions. So their total tax bill would go down about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars in that area. And Henry Bridge, um, Henry Bridge didn't lose as much value, so you would see about a thirty-three dollar increase in their total bill. So the idea being then, across the spectrum of tax services or tax, that the bills would remain about the same. Slightly above and below, but in some cases, well below where they're at, uh, under the current model. So that, as Cindy mentioned, this is, this is our recommendation, but that's gonna come back to you on the twentieth, so we're not asking for direction on that tonight. What we're recommending to you is you set the county rate at three-one-four-five. What that would do is start the discussion on VFDs at point-six-seven cents, because that's your countywide rate already given to VFDs. I can tell you under the recommended, um, VFD funding, it jumps to one, a little over a penny because of the equipment issues and so forth. I'm trying to...
So I think it's important to note that if the board does something on the twentieth, other than what we've recommended, it affects the county tax rate.
If you push it back.
Right.
Um, if, for instance, what I would suggest to you is that you continue, you would break it out anyway. Because having it buried into the three-one, the thirty-one cent number, um...
I'm talking about if we don't go with that. Talking about if you stay with the existing structure.
Even if you don't do the, even if you stay with the existing structure, having it buried into the general county operating tax rate makes it appear as though county government is growing. Um, when we're seeing the driver, you know, we're looking at drivers that are external to the organization. VFDs is one of those drivers, the external of the organization. So what you don't wanna get into a case is when you're looking at this thirty-one forty-five, that we tried to cut sheriff services because we buried the, the, the funding for VFDs into the general fund or the general tax rate. So this discussion really starts at point-six-seven, not at point, uh, starts with the base of point-six-seven, uh, point-zero-zero-six-seven. So this is your true cost of county operations as a tax rate, including EMS and NSPCC funding. So again, these are the two pieces we're looking for direction on tonight. Next, on the twentieth, we'll be talking about what goes into this calculation. And in terms of questions and more detail that you're talking about.
Go back to that slide, please. Uh, three-one-four-five, my perception is that y'all have gotten creative trying to cut costs that we don't need. And, and, but is there any thing in the schools that says, or is that just flat what legislation says?
That's based upon the legislation and based upon their calculation of ADM, which is about a six-hundred-thousand-dollar difference between the way we would calculate it versus the way they would calculate it.
That's about a point of difference.
Does that, I don't know, you probably can't answer this, but, I, I mean, I had the opportunity last week to go visit charter school. It's, it's planning on coming to Union County, Indian Trail. There's two charter schools, net about a thousand schools. That doesn't consider that, right?
And, well, I can only speak to their budget submission. In their budget submission to you all, they've actually asked you to make up what they're losing to charter schools. Sorry.
They include it on top of as a cost. And they always have, in fairness to the schools, it's not something new. They always include the increases.
That doesn't make it easier to swallow, yeah.
They make it, they add to the increase. So what this does is it provides for the legislative requirement. Now, I would tell you, the school's request mentions zero in the legislation, and it's all based on the jury verdict and a couple of other pieces.
Wait, wait one second, please. Uh, you, you said, you're saying that they want us to make up the shortfall for the kids that won't be there and go to charter school?
Correct.
Okay, there's a bubble coming through, and there's gonna be seven, eight thousand kids out of the system. Are, are they gonna ask us to make that up?
I'll go ahead and answer that for you, they probably will.
I, I mean, I mean, so if a kid's not, listen, cause this is a big problem, because we're being asked to, to support a bond or, or vote on a bond, or put out a bond, that, that will create debt for the county that we're gonna have to pay. And we may be asked to pay for the kids that don't show up to go in those classrooms that we're gonna build. That's the problem.
Again, what we're recommending...
And I'm not trying to get off on the schools, because we, we do have a separate session on that. But in, in, in response to the question, I mean, that is the submission that we received today, it did include that.
But they didn't submit it to us, it's on their agenda, to be fair.
Yeah.
They don't, they have till the fifteenth of May to actually submit that to us.
But that's what they're submitting.
But it's on their agenda for consideration. So the superintendent's recommendation is somewhere north of ninety-five million dollars for current expense funding. Under this scenario, this is just slightly more than eighty-nine and a half.
Or specifically, did they ask for those kids that are going to charter school to be paid for?
In their line items, you can...
Their line item?
They start with last year's base and do pluses and minuses. And they, they added half a million dollars to their cost basis for students going to charter schools. So what they're asking you to do is to make up...
So, I mean, this is not something you're, you're perceiving, this is, this is...
No, it says it. Charter school students.
It says they're, they're paid for.
And they show it as a line item expense.
Cause I don't want there to be any misunderstanding.
You get it, they're not saying, you know what I'm saying?
I'm just gonna get a bit of a feel of that.
No, it's, it's specifically said as charter students. Said. And that's how they traditionally, they, they traditionally submit that.
So back to, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna ask, what would the school's tax rate be based on concrete student numbers? Or in other words, our, our assessment of our student population?
Forty-six, probably forty-six-five in that neighborhood, about a penny more. Cause it's five hundred students, equates to about six-hundred-thousand dollars, as Cindy mentioned, six-hundred-thousand dollars, two-point-three million, it's a penny. So it's a third, between a quarter and a third, it's around forty-six and a half. Forty-four, or forty-six-four, forty-six and a half, something like that.
So maybe not?
Uh, but six-hundred-thousand dollars is the difference, is the gap between what we would count students and what they would count students. And we don't, they, the way they calculate how CPI and how student growth impacts the funding model is a little different than how we calculate it. So, um, I believe we follow the legislation. Their councils advise them that they are following the legislation as well. So this is something we just don't agree on necessarily. But for the purposes of your calculation, what I wanted to show you is kind of if you follow their interpretation, this is how it plays out.
So we're looking, you want us to agree on your concept for county operations and school tax rate? And it may vary, once you get additional information, is that a fair statement? Yes, sir.
I just have one quick question. Back to Chairman Hales' question earlier. Is the school tax rate exactly as it is prescribed by the legislation, per our understanding? And if it's not, then that's what I wanna see.
Okay. No, it's not exactly how I would interpret the legislation, but there's a latitude in how you interpret it, so it can go both ways.
Has our legal staff examined it?
Yes.
Okay, and what is their recommendation?
I don't wanna speak for doubt.
I read it in the justice request, and I think that his interpretation is reasonable.
Reasonable, or is it?
There's some ambiguity in the statute.
Well, it's shocking. I, I say throw ambiguity out the window and let's put the tax rate exactly the way it should be.
Based upon your staff's interpretation.
That's exactly right.
We can do that. The impact's gonna be about forty-six and a half versus forty-six percent.
I'll take a half percent anywhere, I can get it.
That's quarter cent less, basically. Do you, so conceptually, I guess on the, on the county operating side, what we're referring, what we're talking about is revenue, revenue neutral rate less the growth factor, to kind of generate about the same revenue year over year, which roughly the same impact. Granted, nobody has an exact median tax bill, but roughly the same revenue to the county, is that...
Yeah, and I guess my, my follow-up question then is, in the event that the legislation goes away, we're not locked into this.
No, sir, you're not making any decisions on tax rate tonight, other than giving us some direction, because we're trying to balance the budget. And I don't wanna give you something that's completely, when you get it in May, you just go, well, this is just not gonna work. Because a lot of, we did, we spent a day cutting down a lot to get to that rate, while protecting some very vital services. And we feel like we're where we, where, we can be where we are and provide the services we need to. But I feel like going significantly lower or, or lower, you would get into some of the things you don't want us to cut. But I feel like going significantly lower or, or lower, you would get into some of the things you don't want us to cut.
Well, but understand, my point is, I don't want us to cut any vital services at the expense of the school's tax rate.
Under this scenario, if you're good with one, then we're, we do not intend to come back and cut out county services to provide for schools, or under this structure, fire. So those are two individual discussions that have to occur. The school's to the bifurcated rate, and on the twentieth, we're going to walk through the VFD side. But that's why we try, that's why we break it out, because we don't want to harm county operations at the expense of growth in those other two areas, because those other two areas are not under the management of a manager. They're, they are individually managed in a lot of different ways. So yes, under this structure, if you, if you're good to go with number one, we're not coming back into number one to get to add to number two or, or, or even three in this case.
Now, we've, we've, we've really siloed them as, as part of this process.
So this, this really increases our county operations tax by what, one?
We're at thirty sixty-four right now, aren't we?
It's less than a penny.
Thirty. You're at thirty because you got the net reduction.
Well, we have the sixty-seven cents.
So one four five.
Okay.
Um, we had Benson, we've talked about before, splitting out the EMS with this as well and putting it with the fire. What would our rate be if EMS was taken out of the three one four five?
I think about six point four.
Three, just under three cents. Six five, six five and change. So two point three cents, so that's right at a little bit less, maybe two and a half, two and three quarters. But we haven't done that in this scenario.
Are you thinking about doing that?
That's what the board wants us to do.
If that's consensus of the board, we'll be happy to.
Because it shows more, I guess, again, that, that, you know, we're managing properly, we're, we're looking for cuts, we're looking for places. You know, even, even sheriffs, you know, fire and safety issues, you know, sometimes people don't mind paying for those where they don't want to pay for county cars and shiny doors. So that might be a good idea of looking at what it would look like with those out.
Well, I would recommend not the sheriff.
Why would you recommend not the sheriff?
Because the sheriff's deputies are county employees. And we control their pay raises, we control the, you as a board, not we, but you as a board, the county side control their benefit package, their pay raises, the vehicles that get replaced, those things. The only mechanism you have to control EMS or the VFDs is collaring the funding. Once the funding goes out to them, you, you're kind of, controls the limits.
They control the benefits, they control the.
They can, yeah, they control the benefit load on their side. So whereas EMS employees are not county employees, they're employees of EMS, or VFD employees are, are employees of the VFDs. Sheriff's deputies are county employees. So, and I think that that, I, I'm all about siloing the tax rates. But I think that takes just one step a little further than I think you would want to go that's beneficial.
I, I think one thing needs to be pointed out, and that was in the past couple of years, previous boards, y'all cut out considerable amount out of our budget. And I think what you're demonstrating here is to continue that process, and you're to be commended for that.
Thank you. We are very conservative in our approach. I think that's because we work for a very conservative board, so.
And I will say, we are getting the benefit of seeing some of that sales tax growth. And heating kind of concerns we've heard, we've, we've been a little more aggressive in our sales tax estimate. So understand that, and you'll see it more when I do my budget presentation, I think the fourth of May is the scheduled date at this point. But we're a little further, I've stressed myself, as the commissioner liked to comment, you know, when we talk about it privately, to a place where we're just barely comfortable with where we're, where we're at. But I don't think it's so much so that we put anything at risk, because I wouldn't let us go that far. But we feel like this is reflective of what the cost of county operations are, what we can do to protect the services and so forth.
If, if that sales tax plan that we've been presented with and were conformed about passes through and we do see an increase, you know, what kind of, what kind of, I mean, I've seen numbers of fourteen million dollars, is that right? There'd be a potential.
It depends on which one you're referring to. There's two bills that just changed the allocation method to population versus CITIS. There's another bill that authorizes like a half penny additional, but the county has to get into roads. Which staff would recommend sending out the roads.
If, if we did do the fourteen billion, when would that take effect?
It's not, I don't know that it's fourteen, I think we look at six, was it at six to seven?
It ranges between four or six. Nobody knows. That's, that's the other.
The number I saw today was something from Raleigh Legislative Bill, who said fourteen, Union County had a forty-six percent change in salary after Union County.
And that could be by the end of the process. If it's like twenty twenty, you're also growing at four or five percent in that process as well. I think that any of the legislation they talked about has like a three-year running period.
So it won't be next.
So yeah, you're not going to be able to do anything next year with it. And then what ends up happening also, depending on which way you go on the tax, tax district side of the discussion, there's an allocation back out to the tax districts of that tax value. So one of the things we're benefiting from this year is because you increased the tax rate last year, we're getting a greater safe portion of sales tax in the county than what we have in store as well. That's part of that growth in sales tax. So again, back to kind of all else being equal, this structure, we feel is very fair to the taxpayer while protecting those core services, providing for the sheriff, providing for human services and providing for those other pieces without going too far beyond what we recommend. So. Anything, so are, just for our purposes, are we okay with item one? Jeff would, I think, ask for a show of hands.
Yes.
But we're not locked into this.
You're not like, you're not adopting it, you're giving us direction.
What we're using this information for is to build the budget that's going to be delivered to you the first of May. So if you're not okay with what we have done, then we definitely need to know sooner versus later today because of the fact that I then have to go back and do more with the budget, I guess is the best way to put it.
Well, I think I've been pretty clear, and if I have, I'll reiterate. The only change that I foresee is if the legislation mandating the amount that we give to the schools goes away, then I think we need to reconsider seriously the amount of money that we allocate to the Union County public schools.
Okay. Can I, let me ask the question this way, and if you all could just give me a show of hands, then. So for the county operations tax rate at point three one four five, are we good with that?
Yes.
Okay. With the school's tax rate, it would be four, six, five, generally using our calculation and our interpretation of the legislation. Is that, is that, I understand your caveat. And, and our calculation is based upon the legislation, and I know that.
And it's still in place, so it shouldn't.
Yes. Okay. And do, and do I have an acknowledgement of that?
I need to ask a question about, um, the bifurcated budget. If we do see the legislation go away, and does that, tell me if, using the bifurcated budget, is that, I mean, we're, we're saying everything goes up or goes down equally, where are we at?
Under the bifurcated process, the thirty-one four five doesn't change. So the county box will present it on May fourth, will hold a public hearing shortly thereafter. You'll get tentative approval to the county's budget. That will put a bow on it and set it aside. If the legislation goes away, the discussion then becomes, on the fifteenth of May, you're going to receive a request from the schools for capital and operating. If the indications now are, it's going to be ninety-five million is the starting place for the discussion on operating.
Compared to?
Compared to eighty-nine million under this tax, under this tax structure.
Okay.
And on the capital side, you have by nineteen seven, all bets are off on the capital side, because I am not sure if they'd come back with seventy-one billion plus nineteen. It could be as high as ninety million. It could be a hundred and fifty million. It could be twenty million, where the bond request is two hundred and fifty million. So once, if the legislation goes away, your collar around that process is gone from that perspective. So then you're back into a situation where you will decide what you're willing to fund under that process. And then the committee, the Board of Education will decide whether, if they believe that's sufficient or not, and will go through that process that's prescribed, and I'm sure you're familiar with.
I'm familiar with it.
So.
So there's no link to the bifurcated process and revaluation? There's no link to, to grow the bifurcated process?
Other than.
Because that was my understanding, is if we grew, they grew.
Yeah.
They do grow.
They get, they get the growth. This, this tax rate
Is including the.
Is at the same level we calculate our penny. So their penny's value is exactly the same. They saw.
That's one thing to know.
Yeah, it's exactly the same in this process. And just like we get the benefit at the end of the year if we collect more than ninety-eight point five percent, there will be some money in that fund, not a ton of money, but if we over-collect property taxes.
But it'll be the same percentage.
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, they'll have a bigger chunk, because if you add the two rates together, they're actually sixty percent of the total. So they'll get sixty percent of the overage to that fund. You as a commission decide what to do with it. It's good for your fund. But we've separated it out. So the bifurcated process is really about isolating the discussion on schools and not marrying or co-mingling county budget and school's budget, because the previous boards didn't feel appropriate to pit sheriff's deputies against teachers in that value judgment. So under our process, you decide on county, you decide on schools, and this year, we want to refer to it as trifurcated. We'll talk about it on the twentieth. You'll decide on VFDs as in isolated. Whether you go with, and my recommendation would be whether you go with hybrid model, full tax model, or some version thereof, that you still isolate it, because I think it's, the transparency is there as appropriate. So. Do you feel, I, I think.
I didn't get an, I didn't get three nods or three hands to my second question on the school's tax rate, as amended by Commissioner Agnes. Yes?
With Frank's.
Yes.
Frank's amendment, yes.
All right.
And number three, we'll talk about.
Next, in two weeks.
Okay, so, okay.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your time.
Can I have a motion? We adjourn this special session on the evaluation.
So moved.
Okay.